Here's your letter.
It says here, we'll understand Martian, not standing. They will be all that. Would she would have on this?
Oh.
But it didn't say anything about.
We're standing down and going to make the handout.
They've already.
No silver was in the pool.
Yeah, Don took pictures.
I also took a picture of.
No, I think that's what's.
I got it.
And they didn't, they didn't.
They just put, they just.
Yeah.
Cause two and one after a while.
Well.
You don't mind, you still have a plan, they say there's a lot of clauses. I have, yeah, but I, I'm looking at people's accounts.
He just said, don't trust me that much.
Oh, yeah.
At our occasion, I never.
And it's telling you, don't trust me way too much.
There comes a job.
Now, but.
The water must be.
Y'all been with it?
Yeah, we, she broke it, they did, they did under twenty. I said.
Well, that's just.
Y'all never will.
Yeah, as I said, hope it's fine. Let her find out then. I'm writing a shiny ass for a very good lady. Well, this, yeah.
Valley Park.
AI, I don't know.
Southern twang.
Southern twang AI.
What's that?
I am today.
You got that.
So therefore. That's good, that's tough. That's my, that invitation out.
Yeah.
It's gonna take up.
That'd be bad.
Somebody's supposed to be getting a police. Use your shelter. If somebody is setting for these to beat his water. And stay.
Yeah, yeah, don't follow me, man. We're both in.
Okay.
I don't want to get up. This call, this says life.
Oh.
You'll think.
Yeah.
Well, that looks like. My son did high.
I have an apple.
A third of a cup of nuts. I suck a maple.
Kind of nuts.
Yes. Whatever I get into the scoop. Sometimes I get all peanuts and sometimes I get the good stuff.
Well, you probably got more peanuts than me.
Oh, yeah, I think it's fifty percent peanuts. And they got enough to twenty dollars.
There.
I can't. How wait can I?
Thanks, dude.
I got a bag of oranges, I got a bag of apples. Bag of salads. Forty dollars.
Like, yeah, how big? Thinking that's.
That can right there, it was twenty, it was twenty dollars. But I eat an apple, there was nothing. I had me an orange.
So when you.
That was pretty.
Yeah. That's my. For show.
Mon.
Montu.
I don't need anything else. I did that. He said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why you gotta, you gotta have safety on every dinner, that.
I assume.
You think it does?
I don't know. They're supposed to have a. They're supposed to have it as a nice, nice one.
I got these, uh, fight.
Okay, y'all, we go ahead and start. This work session, I mean, this is just a work session and stuff, everything. Before we do start, I will open it up to the public if they do have any conversations or if y'all do want to speak. Or let you speak on any family's agenda, if y'all would like to, I'll allow y'all to speak before we start.
On the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the Depot Street property update?
Uh, it is the Daggett property, uh, just an update on what's going on with it right now.
Do you want us to speak on that and update everybody here so they're fully aware? We can be more than happy to do that.
I'm sorry.
I said myself and Ben, we can speak on that and update you from a firsthand position because we're an escrow on that property.
Okay, well, you're aware, it's got a lien on it.
Uh, well, we can definitely go and discuss on that, so I'm sure Mr. Piper can tell you, if Mr. Hawkins was here, he could tell you. Under Tennessee law, if you falsify one document or one statement or present any false evidence in obtaining the warrant, which in this case was administration warrant, it invalidates the whole warrant, anything that was obtained. We have four affidavits signed by people showing that, stating that one of the allegations made by Mr. Bingham was never true. And these are people who have firsthand daily knowledge multiple times a day. And in that information and the facts and findings, if you remember, I requested a copy of that warrant and the findings that were obtained with it, and nothing in the report from the police or the detective substantiated any of the, this particular claim made by Danny Bingham. So, once again, you may want to consult with some outside counsel that's competent in the matter. But, uh, if, if that gets assessed to us, we then have interest to bring action against the town and we will on that. Don't want to, want to be very forthwith, everything I'm doing to you guys, very transparent, trying to resolve issues without going in. Hence my emails this week to, to you, um, Phil, on the outstanding stuff, because I don't want to have to go that route, but we're prepared to. So, I think if we could sit down, have a conversation, I'm more than happy to show all of you guys what's going on, what was false and not true, that one thing. There's a couple of them, but one in particular I want to focus on. And then you guys can make the decision to either run with it or we go the other route. And then the other problem with it is warrants, and I think you, you can seek with counsel to get that opinion. You can ask, warrants cannot be open-ended, it is a fundamental violation of constitutional rights. And the warrant that was left open, it was left open-ended with no expiration date, that's illegal too.
So we could come back and relook at this and you would come in and go.
We, we can do it now, we're, so if you guys want, I can just address it now and explain what our, what we're doing and our plans. And if you guys want to come out and, and have a field trip on a different day when it's not raining, we'll be happy. So, right now, we're waiting on title to close, our escort to close, so that we can take actual possession of the property. But in the meantime, we've been given the right to enter the property, start cleaning it up and working, and that's what we've been doing. We've, we've had constraints because he died intestate, he didn't have a will. So, we, we have to preserve everything, we can't just, you know, take it, sell it, use that money or do whatever, we have to start saving all this stuff. So, we, we were able to get some things that could be recyclable and some valuable out, so then we could get those sold at an auction and get that money brought back in to, you know, to help pay, to get the other things, to clean up the property. This past week, we had somebody in there cleaning stuff up, taking out old cars, taking out a lot of junk. I think there's over a hundred small spools with still braided wire alone, right? The, so those are all getting reorganized, those are all going to get pulled out. You know the two buildings that are on the property, the one next to the tracks, the one dead center? The one dead center is completely, the bones are okay, but it's all falling apart, that's going to come down completely, so that'll be cleaned up.
Is that something y'all want to continue on with today, or y'all want to set the time, he can come back in and have all the time he needs?
Do you have all the overview pictures?
We do not, no.
Mr. Mayor, can we schedule a time?
Absolutely.
To speak with him? So, I would, I would like to see pictures of Dan now and future.
Just, again, this, it sounds great, they're cleaning up the property, that's definitely what the towns go was all along. As far as meeting, you know, anytime the board meets, it's got to be a public meeting, so. My suggestion would be if Mr. Dillon and, is it, um, Ben is also involved in the project, submit the information through Philip or through the mayor, they can disseminate that and then, otherwise, they have to have a public meeting to discuss it.
We could probably take a representative from the board, that, I think if we just have one, that's not a meeting, that's open to public.
That's correct.
We can have one person, so if y'all wanted to pick one individual from the, from the BOMA, um, even, even you feel want to come out.
Well, I could go with one of the.
That's, that's what I'm saying, you come out and then we can, we can walk through it, we can show you. Um, the issues and the concerns that, that Debbie Zimmerman agreed with were issues and concerns that need to be resolved, those have been resolved. The, the stuff that was on the gas line, that was the, um, expressed by the gas company was a problem, we had them come out. They marked where it was at, we were probably out there for over an hour discussing it with them, going through the whole property. We got those moved off, so those are no longer, if you've driven by and you noticed, are pushed back from the road, it's off the gas line, so it's not a problem. Um, there is a gas line that runs through the property, uh, where, where moving stuff at the end, where that is, we're going to move that away from there.
Who, who do we have here during the day that's on the board, it's not working? Is there somebody that's there? Like, go do that?
I do.
Okay. You'd be willing to do that? Y'all pick a date, get with him, can you get with them, give them a date, they can meet you and do it with you?
Yeah, what, uh, who can do it?
Me and Phil.
Phil.
Okay, you and Philip, all right, what do you, what do y'all want to do?
If we don't do it tomorrow, it's, for me, it's gonna have to be over a week because I'm on vacation.
Okay.
I can do.
Tomorrow works, right?
If you guys available, what time?
Yeah, um.
Mid morning.
I, I have a, I have to, mid, what time, what time mid morning?
Ten, eleven o'clock. Earlier or late.
Yeah, I can just have them do that stuff in my office, yeah, what time would be it?
Earlier or late.
Okay.
You were saying about ten?
Earlier, oh.
Oh, late, man, what's the earliest you can do it?
I'm pretty flexible.
Okay.
I just, not first thing in the morning, I gotta get my score done in the morning, but like.
What time do you get it?
Nine. Yeah, nine, nine thirty, I can try to.
Do you want, let's, let's just do nine thirty, give that buffer.
Okay.
That's on nine thirty, if you want to meet up at nine on Depot.
Yeah, I, I, we just meet y'all there.
That's perfect, I think that works okay, and thank you for, uh, addressing that.
While, while we're, while we're on that topic, can we finish what the property update? This is just for there. Okay. I'll do that. Okay, all right.
I'm just giving everyone an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, okay.
When was this put on the agenda?
I guess so.
When was this put on here, when was this?
When the agenda was made at the beginning of the week.
Okay.
Okay. Nobody else to speak?
Do you, do you happen to have timestamps? One that was made?
It'll be in the metadata, you request it.
Timestamps of when it was added?
You can request it with the metadata and it'll all be in there.
Is anyone now, does he need something? All right, I'm, I'm done. We'll close it, for the public to speak, appreciate it. In all our meetings, we've already done three minutes, I know there's some people saying we don't give them three minutes, that's the rule of thumb. The board set that time, not me, so if the board wants to change our meetings, give them five or ten minutes to stop, I'm dealing with it. I know I've gone over a bunch of meetings, so we just didn't decide to have three minutes, that's why it's always ten.
I think what it is, is the three minutes is only when citizens, when we get to the agenda part. They, they had.
All the time they need.
All the time they needed.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So that's been misconceived out there in the world, that three minutes is all they get. Three minutes is what we've always have done, I was told that's what we're supposed to do, I've been over a thousand times and got in trouble. But, once you get to the agenda and get on that warrant, they can speak, they can go as long as we need to, that is correct. That's right, not here, that's in the body, so we'll get that out, set out and like. Phil, you just take it over from here and go with it, this is y'all's work session.
Okay, I guess A is the special call meeting from September twenty second, update, Todd, if you would, uh, care to kind of tell us what happened, where do we go, that type of thing?
So, yeah, so the, are you talking about the planning commission meeting?
Or.
The special call.
Or the special follow-up as well.
Whoa, okay, with respect to that, of course, the me, the motion after it was opened and after I got here, right, um, was basically to adjourn that meeting and then there was, of course, the letters submitted by Mr. Dillon, it looked like it had been forwarded to the, the state. The minutes, I think, that are being drafted, and as I recall, the motion was that the meeting would be adjourned and that, that information would be sent to the state, however, yeah, based on the face of the documentation, it looked like it was already being forwarded to the estate, to the state, and the entities listed there, so. I think, I don't know, if the county's looking for, for the direction, whether that actually needs to be sent to the state by the town or if we're just relying on the fact that that is being sent by the complainant to the state.
What's your call?
I think the board or the town ought to be able to send.
So stand by Phil's call, Phil, let's say that's.
That would be my suggestion. With the towns, but does that come from him or does that come from his office?
No, I think we can just try to clarify what the, what the.
Okay, so we've received the complaint or sentiments in the. And I sent to the Ethics Board and the Comptroller's Office.
Uh, yeah, whatever was on that letter.
Absolutely. Are we, are we concerned of any illegal activities at this time? From any evidence from the board or maybe?
That's not a question again, because I don't know.
Again, all of the, the, we have to go through both Ben's and Mr. Dillon's information, but, you know, no, mostly it all related to the August twenty fifth, uh, planning commission meeting, which, you know, we talked about.
May I speak? To answer your question, I know I probably roughed some feathers here. My thought process is the allegations is made against our board and the planning committee. Anytime in my previous career, anyone was accused of any wrongdoing, they were immediately placed on the administrative list, suspended from all actions, all functions, anything.
Whether guilty or not.
Whether guilty or not, let an outside entity, most likely the state or TBI, um, THC investigate the allegations. The allegations is made very serious, and if, if the town, I feel that if we heard that, it's going to be two or three things, it's going to create more uproar amongst the citizens. It's going to look if the town investigated. And it didn't, yeah, and it didn't come out the way that the citizens thought that it should have, then it would have looked like a cover-up by the town itself. Me personally, I don't want to have anything associated with it. We don't investigate our own.
Right, I agree.
My suggestion would be to let the state do the investigation. When anyone that's brought in those claims or allegations, be suspended from all due usual participation or all activities.
Right.
Until the findings come back. That was my thought process, that's the way that I.
Makes sense.
The direction that I wanted to get on, and I did not clearly explain that.
Yeah.
What was confusing to me was, I didn't, I mean, I didn't think we were getting the information to investigate, we were just going to listen to the, to the citizens and listen to their allegations. Uh, when I got a call from Mr. Dillon, I think he had said he thought it was a great idea to get the board together to present it all to us. So.
That's what I did.
I got the meeting set up, so I was just kind of blown away when it gets canceled, they don't get the opportunity when the video pops up saying we were, you know, hats off, we forgive the being canceled, I thought that's what they wanted, so.
I thought they did.
I, I just wasn't really. But I do understand what you're saying as far as the legal, but I, I talked to Mr. Dillon as well, and, um, I thought they were wanting to get down to the table of what the allegations were, so we could try to work with them to try to come to a conclusion, you know, but. You, you know, I do agree with you, it's a legal matter, but I, I mean, that's what we paid Todd for, he's our legal boss and.
Yeah, but I mean, he's also involved too.
Right.
And I would like to have his name, or everyone's name.
Yeah, clear.
Clear. And, and let's just say, let's just say, what if by chance somebody's doing something we don't know?
Right.
And if I'm investigated, he's investigated, he, everybody, I wanted to go through the fine to call them.
Do it right first.
Yeah, do it right the first time, because if, if, if we do it right the first time, then we can move forward.
We can't accuse you, Washington, if that.
Exactly, and that's the main thing that I did not clearly communicate to you, I own that. I will work better on communicating my thoughts, but that was, that was the purpose here, intent for.
Well, I do know, he's come forward with me, he's talked to me over a year about all kinds of allegations. And I have not brought it forward, I've always let Danny handle it, his way up there, the district chief handle his way. I thought I'd go in, that's called me, then he'd come on forward. And he did, but he didn't get to speak, and I think he was going to have forty-five minutes to talk over that after the three minutes of everybody else, but. You know, we need to set up another meeting, you know, if he has other allegations and he comes forward.
What, what, what is the allegation that you're concerned about?
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm not for sure.
That's what I was asking you.
No, that's what I, I'm.
There we go.
I, I, I mean, we're.
I'm not, no, you're not unless.
Okay, I get acknowledged, no, no.
No, that's what, that's, that's how I started.
They took to the board.
That's how I started the question to you, the reason I brought that up is because I wanted to know out of all the allegations that's been put in front of us, if there's anything severely le- illegal that's, that appears as happening.
So my suggestion, read the, the, what Mr. Dillon submitted.
Right.
It all revolves around the last planning commission meetings on the issue with respect to, um, the motion that was made to table the recommendation of the annexation, that was it.
At the planning committee.
The information that I provided you regarding conflict of interest today, read that.
Okay.
All right. Now, Mr. Hudson raises some issues in the information that he presented, that I was unaware of, I haven't seen, now. They appear to still represent possibly an indirect conflict of interest on some other planning commission issues, but there's nothing been, uh, presented that I've seen that suggests any sort of illegal conduct, anything that would rise to the level that would even require a suspension at this point. Now, again, it's something out there, maybe his letter ends with him saying, basically, I've got all this additional information, but I'm, I don't have time to give it to you. So, look at all of that and then consider that.
And look at your paperwork compared to Tennessee.
And, under your code of ethics, you've, and, and I would suggest, if you have any concerns about the advice I've given you, you have the right to, to retain, and I would even suggest getting outside counsel to come in and investigate it. Um, but, I haven't seen anything, like today's paper. The Metro School, uh, Fair Board, somebody has filed a Metro School claim against the Fair Board, that they're basically saying that they took money and other gifts for influence on votes that came before them. I haven't seen anything like that, I haven't seen any suggestions that any of this board, anybody on the complaining commission has received anything like that, that was raised to any sort of level criminal activity. It has to do with this conflict of interest with respect to the growth development, which if you look back at every single meeting, I think Mr. Knox had recused himself and not voted on any single item that's been presented related to the grant. If, you know, they had the records, they made the records request, if there's anything else out there that they've got, they can submit it to the DA, they can submit it to you, they submit it to the TBI, and it should proceed like that, but.
So how does?
They're not hanging on, because I think there's more than just what you're talking about, official misconduct and ethical violations. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think I read over maybe, uh, someone gaining personal profit from municipal proceedings.
There was a reference to that code provision, but there wasn't any facts to, to suggest that that was the case.
I can lay mine out if you guys want to mention.
Can we just let the state do all that and figure it out? We, and that, that's reasonable.
So, so, yeah, I think, again, sending that complaint to the state, and again, if they have other information they want to submit to the Ethics Commission, if they want it submitted to the District Attorney, if they want it submitted to the TBI, the Comptroller, whomever, send it in, and, and if the state decides to investigate, but I don't think, and I could be wrong, but I, I don't think that all this is necessarily going to bring somebody in from the state to do this investigation. And then what does the town do in the meantime, with respect to town business, do you just make and see what the state's going to do? I'll just see if they do.
Anything with planning committee until we get the results back? Just suspend or pause, if you will, any planning committee until the findings.
So, I, I think, I'm trying to think how that might work. Um, you obviously appoint, who's, is Joe the, the council appoint, do you, I, I say the other.
Isaac is me.
I know, Joe is.
So, so you have Mrs. Everly, you have Mr. Knox, you have this connected there, the planning commission members, they have been identified as a mission. The mayor has the appointment authority over all of those commissions. You have control as the board with respect to this issue with the Plan of Services and the annexation. If you don't want that to move forward, you, until this is all resolved, you have complete control over that, you just don't pick it up, you don't consider it. So it doesn't, there's no reason for the planning commission to consider a Plan of Services if the board says, we're not going to consider this annexation until these complaints are addressed. That puts that particular issue there.
I think maybe in Florida, do we do the planning commission pause period for right now?
Well, if somebody, if, if somebody submits something that needs review, then you're holding out the citizen for having a review of that. Um, so that, and, and I do want to, this is a work session, so this is just information purposes, you can't make a decision with respect to these issues tonight. So, I don't have a doubt at the moment, but that is one way with respect to what seems to be the primary concern of the complaints, this, you know, the annexation and this development generally moving forward. You could definitely put a pause on that by, by not moving forward with the annexation.
I think that's a scar. I think that.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at, I mean, could this be six months, could this be a year and a half, could this be a week?
Well, you, at the next meeting, you could vote to appoint someone to investigate, whether that's another attorney, sometimes public entity partners will sub, send somebody in, or the insurance companies, they could do. Usually it's an employment type investigation, but it could, you could ask them, and they might have an attorney, you know, to do that.
I mean. Move that.
Boy, your hometown ordinance.
The public entity partners of, um, the insurance company for the town, and they do, sometimes they'll, they'll provide counsel to do an investigation. I just don't know what type of timeline the state is going to respond. And if it's, you know, the TBI, they're not even going to tell you if they're responding necessarily, they're just going to start looking, correct me if I'm wrong.
They should notify whoever's in charge, whether it be the county mayor, the city mayor, the city minister.
Can we come in and recommend a, some of the district attorney?
They, they should notify them that there is. At least that's been my experience in the past, that they have notified that none of their own are being investigated, or their, their council. But again, coming from a law enforcement institute, a municipal government, I'm not sure how TBI, I'm sure there, there are probably divisions on corrupt government or ethics division or whatever, but. The, uh, the, the official misconduct and ethics concern will come. The, uh, the, the official misconduct and ethics concern or allegations is what really concerns me. And that's, I want my name cleared and free, and if I've done something wrong, I will hold up to that, I will adjust and will repeat whatever penalties, if I've done something wrong, I will make it right. And I think that if we hire an insurance company, has an attorney going, I think that's still a complete.
Yeah, and then, and you may, you can, you know, hire another investigator or counsel or someone else to do that.
For the investigation?
Yep, if you don't hire somebody, I'm not sure how quickly the state with someone else is gonna respond.
Well, given with all the media that's been involved with Millersville Police Department, another small town, I can't think of what that name was, or what small town that was with the corrupt government.
Cotton Town.
Is that, was it Cotton Town, is that where they, they did a vote of confidence on that mayor's? But I mean, they moved pretty quick on that, if, if I understand correctly. Not, not on the mayor, but with the corrupt government, or the maybe it's something other agency I'm thinking of.
Well, I guess I'm a little tired of hearing about the mayor, I don't really control this board, the board is in charge of me.
Well, but you're.
On the planning commission, I'm not on the planning commission, I'm just there to support. The members, I guess, I put on there, three of them. And then this board here still votes on whatever they decide, it has to come to this board to vote on it. If we're doing anything illegal, Todd, I mean, we, we respect that you're gonna let us know and stop us and tell us what we're doing illegal. If I've done anything illegal, I'm not aware. Now, they have brought things before me and told me we're doing things illegal. But I get told that we're doing things illegal all the time, ever since I've been mayor the past four, five, six years, whatever it's been. But that don't mean we're doing it illegal, so somebody says that's illegal, don't mean it is. But this was getting too serious, and that's why I asked him to come forward. This is on just our town completely, everybody, this is me, this is gonna be all of us involved. So I rely, because I'm not an attorney, I'm not a full-time mayor, the mayor is a part-time position, it's not even that. But we do the best we do, but I, I don't think nobody at this table, and I don't feel like nobody on the other tables are doing anything illegal on purpose, but I do feel like we do overstep the boundaries sometimes, not realizing it. By what I got told last night, he didn't even record our meeting, and told all of us we could be arrested, and so everybody got out of it, and he could be right. But, uh, we're, I'm not aware of that, but apparently we need somebody to tell us that we're doing wrong. And maybe we have been, maybe we haven't been, I feel like we have not. I don't think we have.
Wouldn't, I mean.
I think that's what you just talked about.
I don't, I don't know what, I'm assuming none of you guys have been paid to, to make any decisions.
No.
Or have gotten any other sort of financial benefit.
We're sure our treatness, that's what we have.
So, again, if.
Well, I think it's a serious situation, anytime somebody brings allegations upon us, us, you know, about doing illegal things, I think it needs to be taken seriously.
I do too.
And, and, you know, uh, my, my thing on it is, number one, you know, I've never seen anything illegal happen, I'm not an attorney, I don't know all the laws.
I'm not either.
I, I understand what you're saying, but you guys know, if something is clearly improper, is being done, you know, influence decisions either in front of the board or the planning commission, there would at least be allegations of that, there would at least be, and then, and then there needs to be some sort of proof. And if there's those things, the TBI, the district attorney, they're, they're gonna look at it, they're gonna, they're not gonna hold back. Uh, and, you know, I think you do wanna address these issues, but the, the letter that was submitted on Monday night, however many pages it was, focused on a planning commission action, where the result of the vote was to table a motion for thirty days. That was it, and I think the minutes clearly reflect, and I think the video fully reflects, that Mr. Knox did not vote, and he recused himself on all of that discussion that all has to do with the annexation of a right lane. Doesn't even have to do directly with his development, doesn't have to do with a plazas medal approval or a development contract, has to do with the annexation of Pope on County Right of Way, like twenty-five hundred feet. What else, I mean, may, if there's something else out there, let's see what it is.
That's what I wanted to hear.
To deal with.
I mean, we, we've heard from our council, that makes sense, so.
But beyond.
I can't see, every time there's an allegation, are we gonna shut everything down?
That's what, that is, I agree.
I mean, that could be a strategy, like, alright, let's wait till it opens back up, then we hit it with this and shut it down.
I agree.
Are we gonna suspend, you know, if allegations are against me, are you gonna suspend me from, from the board?
No.
But every other decision thereafter is gonna be in question.
And, and, uh, Ben, I think what you're referring to is, you know, if you have an employee that there's an allegation against for some misconduct, then yet you go ahead and suspend them, do the investigation, then you have to decide if it's essentially with pay, without pay, you know, depending on the result of the investigation. When you're talking about a planning commissioner, you know, the, I hate to keep pointing at the mayor, but because of the way the statute's set up, the mayor's the one who appoints those commissioners and can remove them.
I did. The whole board can't remove them, reach your rules.
I mean, if Todd.
Can I stop the planning commission and sell it? Can we, like, post upon, like, Ben was kinda talking about?
Yeah, I'm not talking about one person, I'm talking about suspending everybody.
Well, and again, I, I think. Over allegations.
Well.
Yeah, I have.
Is he an investigator? He's a legal, legal counsel. Is he gonna investigate us? He probably can, he probably has.
I would, no, I would say that there would be a conflict in that, and I would have to.
Yeah, absolutely, but nobody's investigating.
No, so, guys.
If there's enough.
Follow, follow me down this right of hope for just a second. If, if, if you target me and say, hey, you're suspended from planning committee, okay, all well and good. You target Joe, Jeff, Shaw, any, Isaac, any other member, I think that sets you up for, um, there's some, I can't remember the clause, anyway, we're targeting a specific person. So let's do this, let's pause all actions from every member. If need be, I will act this down from the planning committee. Pause it until you give an investigation, because any decision after, this claim's been brought forward, there's official misconduct, there's ethics violation. Now, if we, if we decide anything else, and it may take three or four months, it may take a year, like what Mr. Phillips talked about with Cotton, Cotton Town. If any decision has been made after that date, to me, that's all questionable. And that is up for litigation.
And when the, everyone, the video.
I think, I think it's a terrible idea.
Yeah, it's going too far.
To shut it down in the middle of Donald's. How, how, how twenty they spend, how much time, engineers, we're just gonna tell them, sorry, it might be six months before the investigation.
Those are the people.
And they may, and they, and they may mess it back and say.
I don't ask the question. I understand what you've got a problem. And the allegations are they over on just one subject, and that contains only to the, uh, the road annexation?
No, they're widespread, widespread, he, he didn't read all the papers, because he's way off base what he's saying, it's widespread.
I didn't know whether this is what, my hammer hit the hand on my nail, or whatever it was.
Because we only had three minutes.
The county come in and said, we have got, we're trying to give you the road, and that is the, the biggest issue?
No, so here's, here's what happened, because we only had three minutes to present, instead of what I thought was gonna be ample time to do it properly, which I was really appreciative of at first, but that got reduced down to three minutes. There's no way I could even submit what was in that one letter. The reason that one complaint was done, because it was the most recent that, that took place. It was so widespread with the violations that were in it, we, so I chose to pull that out of everything and solely focus on that, because we were only gonna have three minutes.
You didn't realize that one allegation.
You was gonna have more on that when I got to that, that was just.
This is the only issue, it's this subject right here, the annexation of the road.
No, the, the, the issue isn't the annexation, the issue is the ethics violations that surrounded it.
Well, you were gonna have lots of time.
That was not communicated to us at the announcement.
Because that, if you read the agenda and what was published, it said you have three minutes, and we didn't have some time, because, but here's the problem. It was scheduled at five o'clock, the planning commission was scheduled at six. When you take a step back from the community side, and you look at it from the outside in, there's, there's stuff going on. The amount of people that have reached out to me solely individually have, have been giving us a lot of information that's been checking out, so we're not the only ones that know about stuff. You, you put it up there and you say, hey, we're gonna have this, let's get to the bottom of it, but you're limited to three minutes. It didn't say we'll have follow-up discussion for as much time as necessary, it said you have three minutes. That's why that Friday, I said, I wrote up the letter, I sent it to Phil. Philip said that he, he received it and he distributed it to everybody. So I expressed my concerns, not one person reached out to me or responded, said, hey, three minutes is just, because that's our rules, we're gonna have all the time we need afterwards to, to go over everything, nobody said that. So when there was ample time to do that, that never happened. So it, what it looked like from the outside, gentlemen, is we're gonna get to the bottom of this, we're gonna limit it to three minutes, nothing's, nothing of substance is gonna be able to put forward, we're gonna be able to say, we tried and there was nothing there, make it all go away, brush it under the rug. That is a sentiment that is felt by people across this town, right? That's not just something that I'm saying. So that's why I did what I did, that's why Ben put forward stuff. If you look at the stuff he put forward, as I mentioned in my letter, some of it, you're gonna look at like, this is, this is, this is gobbledygook. But when you get the context of what it is, and you start realizing, hey, you got a planning commission member who has extensive business relationships and partnerships with certain individuals, that he failed to disclose, that he's voted on their projects, and we can connect from all these different angles and put all of these different, remember the cluster? You'd have like the one word in the middle, and then you draw the lines with the circles and put everything off? And like a, what do they call them, brain, blank, brain clusters, I think is what they call them? We, we can put those together, and we can link them all right back to that one planning commissioner. And with that one planning commissioner, he didn't disclose those things, he's voted on those projects, we have the minutes that he voted. You can pull the videos and go back and double check. There's a lot of that going on. And then you, you guys, well, I say you guys, when you read the town ordinance, your ethics officer is the city attorney. He's the one who's actually supposed to initiate the investigations and do the investigations. If the allegation's against him, the mayor has to do the allegation, the investigation. You should know this, you're the town attorney, it's plain and simple in there. Just like when Ben Hudson in the past said, hey, don't they have to fill out a form to recuse themselves? If you guys remember that, one was about Jeff Knox, one was about Ben Piper, right? Ben Piper's was in two thousand twenty-four, I think it was September two thousand twenty-four. Knox, Knox's was in October of two, two thousand twenty-five. But here's, here's my point, he asked you that because he knows that you have to do that. He says, no, you don't, as long as it's on the record. Gentlemen, it's in your, your ordinance, it's in your town ordinance, you have to, he advised you to break the law.
Did you not say that October of twenty-five, October twenty-five is what I hear you?
No, 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 I think it was like October twenty-eighth and twenty-four.
October the twenty-fifth, and so you got your dates wrong.
No, I, I.
I mean, I heard, where you got?
Okay, I don't have my dates wrong.
Camera, but you can't figure out something that hadn't happened yet, so October the twenty-fifth.
I'll bet my mortgage against yours that it's correct, and I have, I have the evidence of it existing.
I know, you have it correct, but you said it wrong.
Okay, we'll split the hairs, here we go. I think it was in October.
We're getting out of hand, we're gonna stop, this, this, this is a work session.
I taught you, and allow yourself.
Oh, my gosh, okay, we'll post it.
Just taking consideration that ethic complaints are the same people's mind property, where the war's going on.
I agree.
So here.
Well, I'll give it, I'll give context to that, and, and here's a good point, and I can explain it to both of you two gentlemen.
We gotta stop it now, y'all, but it's just, so you'll have to come back, we're gonna let you come back.
Well, can we set that up now, let's set that up now, I think that's a beautiful thing.
Why don't we get through our meeting first, and then you guys can do that.
We'll set you up.
Three other things to meet tonight already.
Let's go on for the work session, I'm shutting everything else behind us down, nobody else loves to speak.
I had some. Let's move on, I had a possible road annexation right after that, and that was kind of brought up. The only thing I'm saying is that you can vote on that to stop it if you would like, it is going to.
This is not going to be on the next meeting's agenda though, because last month you didn't do it, but, but maybe, depending on if it goes back to planning commission, depending on whether it's a planning commission meeting, it may, it may come back to you in the future, or you can always initiate it if you want to, but it won't be on the October meeting.
That's why it says possible.
Okay, so it's not gonna be on it.
It will not be on this month's meeting notice. All right, C, water and sewer update, let's try to move along. Uh, Donnie can chime in here if he wants to, all I know is the sewer plant is still on schedule as of right now. The water plant, WNO has come back and done what they needed to do other than.
The only one they lack is the touch-up paint, but we have to wait till cooler weather to cause the compensation.
So the water, water plant will be done then, sewer is on schedule still, we do have a, um, construction meeting on that second Tuesday of October, I think on the seventh. Uh, McDonald's project update with T-Dot, uh, we have a tentative meeting set with them on October seventh, or I'm sorry, on October thirteenth. Uh, this will be to, uh, meet with T-Dot again to discuss, and hopefully come to some conclusion about whether there needs to be a turn lane, if there has to be a turn lane, how long there has to be a turn lane. Uh, all that will be brought up between McDonald's and T-Dot, and hopefully we can hash everything out at that point. Uh, McDonald's is still interested in, in building here, uh, they have, uh, let, just run back to church to know that they do not intend on backing out of property at this point. So everything is still a go, but it's up to T-Dot.
And they don't come back from places they moved.
Make sure they'll come back, they have to build the building.
But the meeting is, is, the last I understood was, first we didn't need a turn lane, then T-Dot said we didn't need a turn lane, but third, asking for the town to help pay for this turn lane?
They're asking T-Dot to.
T-Dot's. And do we think T-Dot's gonna help pay?
We do not, huh? But if so, it could help, T-Dot has also looked at the turn lane from the schoolway down.
School.
I personally think it needs a turn lane.
When, when, we can get there.
So if we can get it, it would be great, and the town may have to chip in some of that. But, uh, that, T-Dot probably could possibly put that out as a grant, a matching grant to, uh, where they would do part of it. Uh, I'm speaking for them, and I'm sure that has been done in the past. Deco Street Railroad Crossing, uh, we've just put new signs up, we were asked by the, by CSX, uh, about the underpass, eleven foot one each, there was a sign on one side, there wasn't on the other, so we got that done, uh, today, right, for, uh, today, today. The eggs are running together.
Eleven four, no?
And also one, still eleven one, we didn't raise it.
We bought, we still have, we still have a block that's out there, all right?
No, not yet, uh, this is just for the underpass. Uh, we also put signs on there to go ten miles an hour, suggested under the underpass's foot, and force you to blow your horn and hope not, uh.
Where does the holdup on the block in the pass, is that something y'all still want to do?
I'm getting there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Phil.
Uh, we have gotten concrete barriers donated from the Lions Club, uh, to put those up there. We have contacted CSX, they required being seventy feet off the track on each side, which we actually measured, we have room.
Does that block crush the road?
It does not, it's right on the edge of, so, we haven't been out there to physically do it, but on the GIS, it is right on the edge.
They wanna say the Lions Club agreed to let the town use.
Yes.
When you say donate, they're like, they're.
Yeah, donate for, for. Yeah, donate for for temporary use, yes.
That makes sense.
Uh I also spoke with the fire chief and I didn't know if he would be here tonight, uh he is not, so I'll speak for him now. He, uh along with what Alderman Gilbert said at the time of this vote, feels like that there should be a way for emergency vehicles to get rid of it. If we put concrete barriers up, there is not. His suggestion was can we put uh either the posts up that be taken out from the ground or put a gate up on each side, either remote or with lock, because as he said, uh getting off the truck and unlocking a gate on both sides of the track is still quicker than going around ninety-nine in the ball line.
Well, can we back up in front and and when you look at, I never would have thought in drilling a hole, putting a post, uh post. Now that you think about the ball fields, that's how they do that, which that would happen.
You put drywall posts.
Never even thought about that and that might be, might be a cheaper option and better option.
Freeze in the winter, so they're still gonna have that problem. Does that have a gate that freezes that, you know, stuff open at fourth park going down?
You're looking at cost to.
Yep.
Draw a hole and put a pipe in it?
Well, if you do, they could freeze the litter, it's just that if you get the automatic ones that lower and go up and down. Those are very, those are very expensive. Uh gates, remote gates are expensive, uh gate with just a lock on it, not so bad.
What is it?
I don't know the price of.
I was just bringing this back to y'all for the discussion, once again, we cannot make a decision.
If fully, construction, construction red lights. When we went to Wuisburg and they were repairing the bridge in Wuisburg and they had the construction red light that it will be two minutes here, uh and then it will change and then if it's red here, it's green here, if it's green here, then it turns red here. Wonder how much those are? And or if it would be something that will be a permanent fix, I mean, obviously anything that what we do should satisfy.
Are you saying to let everybody come under the underpass?
Yes, sir.
I think I've heard of traffic light before, it's four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it is.
You got to go to all, oh, they just, yeah, it's outright. I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we stand back to the center of the conversation.
Well, and this this conversation itself is not about the underpass, it's about whether or not we're going to block that underpass with concrete barriers.
The CSX, when you talked, when you had seventy feet, because I thought it was fifty feet at first, did they offer anything? Or would they, they wouldn't offer anything that they would give you to go over whatever. They just told you you have to be at least seventy foot to get out of there later.
They wouldn't help us for one of that thing that straight.
Let me, let me ask you.
It wasn't quite.
Todd, you remember, what did the board decide to do, did we vote on blocking the road?
Yes.
Yes.
So we need to, for you both, what do we need to do?
Well, yeah, so it needs to come back before you at the next meeting and make a determination.
Because I feel like I'm gonna pull a hiss on it, kicking the can down the road, because we're just waiting for somebody to get hit, killed, or crossing it again. So he used the term, I'm gonna use it, you're kicking the can down the road again, we've been kicking this can for years, I just started kicking the other can, thank you.
Well, we can, we can put the concrete barriers as far as that I can get. Yeah, I I'm pretty sure.
Somebody's thinking to get killed again, it got the purpose already.
Yeah, my my point is.
Is that a few red boards mean, Mr. Mayor?
No, no, I said I'm gonna kick that can too, I'm gonna kick both of them.
You're the recipient, man.
It's a good turn, I like it.
Joe, we're talking, we're still gonna do it. I'm trying to be able to get some donated.
I think you still have to do it because of what you voted on, you have to close it down, it's a matter of how it's done.
So then we'll have the exercise and the reflective stuff on it, so they don't hit the concrete barrier, let alone go through it. So we'll have added reflectivity and stuff like that as well.
What are the, what are the things with Ben, you're around railroad tracks, right, to murder boroughs, what are they?
Yeah, we we can't keep people from hitting the concrete barrier.
We're doing signs with T-Dot and stuff like that, they have like, we're doing a bridge approach mission now, at this point that a low somebody turns it the wrong way, they got two, so I'm saying as long as we have the code and signage, reflectivity to it.
Yeah, I would suggest having, having Steve or or some an engineer look at it and check it.
Make sure.
Here's, here's the best you can do with respect to, you know, keeping it safe.
Right.
What keeps people safe from not crossing that railroad track? So why keeps us being sued and we don't need nobody to get killed?
Not crossing the track, it's the only way to be safe.
I'd like to support Chief's house idea.
You guys know he's a railroad engineer, he's a firm witness, right?
Running chains from four, I don't even know if he's even running trucks on, a channel crossing.
Why isn't that those ones that look like government built that have like keys that go down there?
This would be something for a meeting, though, if if any of you have any ideas, please do, with me and and we can.
So we're gonna hold off on blocking until we decide what to do again, is that right?
Would you like it on the board agenda for next, the October one?
Yes. So we're trying to figure out how to allow the workers to be able to cross, right? Which is what you just brought up earlier.
It may cost a little bit of money.
Chief Stapp wasn't here at the same time, he just felt like it wasn't furze well enough that emergency.
See, the emergency vehicles go underneath there, sit for the fire, the truck.
Except for the ladder truck, and the ladder truck houses all of the tools for motor vehicle accidents.
But there are also other trucks.
There is some spare stuff on the other trucks, but the ladder is primary, the ladder is eleven four, the bridge is eleven one.
Can I ask the question first? How many, how many times have I used the ladder, is it like a lot? Four, five?
They carry, they did carry, it's not for fire, but they do.
I mean, I I described it, so I was wrong.
Tell me seriously, how how many times have you done it? I mean, since y'all.
Oh, I know you gotta use the truck with the ladder itself, right?
No, the ladder has nothing to do with why they need the truck.
Understood, understood.
Can we not give, can we not rotate tools to the other truck?
You guys can call what you want, I'd say leave the ladder truck alone, leave stuff along with it, try to get yourself a way to do the overpass. If you can't, we're just gonna have to do it and go around, we're taking care of Marshall County on the other side of the bridge.
I understand that, but I would be, that that doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with the question that I have.
The question you asked.
The question I asked, can we take the tools off of the ladder truck?
You can take some of them, but you won't get them all to fit on every truck. And what you have now is you have spare equipment, scrubs and stuff on your extra engines, which can take off.
So why is the ladder truck even responding to the personal injuries?
You need to talk to someone.
I mean, I think that's, ladder truck should be for aerial fire attack. Well, this side should give that word, active working construction fire, too sore. What about, what about injury?
What about Kansas Springs, they don't have ladder truck, do they?
Kansas Springs Fire Station, which is under us right at the moment, has an engine, a tanker, and a SUV.
All right, this right now, we all, we all worried back on the railroad track.
If we close that off on that full round, how many homes would that affect?
It would affect Marshall County on the other side of whatever Chapel Hill has.
I know, but we, it's volunteer thing that we go and help the county fight fires. And it takes fifteen or twenty minutes to get from Wuisburg, if it takes us an extra five minutes, you know?
Again, I would suggest you talk to Stott.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, you know, they're gonna get there, it's just like if you call and it comes from Farmington or any other area. It's gonna take a time to get there, now, we we're not gonna get there with a snap of our finger. And I don't know, they gonna put a time limit on what time we're supposed to be there?
I think everybody's kind of missing what Chief Stapp was trying to say. This is not about house fires, because ninety percent of the houses they make are motor vehicle accidents. And that ladder truck houses the equipment they need for those accidents. So that, I just, I'm relating this.
That's back to Ben's point, that would have been true.
Round one makes sense.
I may be. It may be. May be cheaper.
All right, let's go put eyes on it.
Can we get, let's put. Let's kind of discuss and maybe go there and look.
Well, I can't make sure.
Joe, what do you think, we got the truck all the time, you're on the call more than anybody.
Again, like I said, I described it, so I let you talk to Stott, I agree that it'd be easier to go over the top. But it's scary as hell, I've already come close myself, I don't like going over the top, I'd rather go around if I could.
There you go.
But again, the engines have small rescue tools, but it doesn't have the full complement, just like when dump truck rolled over, mediated other stuff and it was on the initial engine that was there with the equipment, so.
Joe, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what Alderman Piper was asking is can we put all that equipment on?
Again, a part of the equipment that is on the primary, which is the ladder for extrication, they got an extra set of spreaders on engine two and on engine one. It's not as good, of course, you know, the way it works off the engine, because then we also have hydraulic rams or airbags and things which the city again ain't gonna buy to put on every truck. So we have our primary heavy rescue type setup, set up on the ladder.
What was it on before? What truck was it on before?
Didn't have all the stuff that we got, we ran this stuff, now we've got bigger complement of tools. It's all, you can take a look at it, you can walk in the station anytime you want and take a look within the truck. We got guys on from seven to three, seven to two, whatever, every day.
Would you be willing to put eyes on him and have and have him give an slight explanation to us?
Don't discuss and deliberate, it's like. Two, two board members outside the phone booth.
Just have Chief come to the meeting.
Let's just have Chief Stapp come to the meeting.
Thank you, they can bring pictures or whatever you want with them.
Okay, moving on, gentlemen, we'll we'll put that on the agenda for the for the meeting in October. Uh the depot property that we've discussed before, uh I was informed that a lien had been placed on that property at some point and it had not been, uh I spoke with the judge and she had said that she had signed off on what she needed to and there was a, I'm gonna say this from the way she said, there was a three thousand dollar fee put on the property with a fifty dollar per day charge and that was on the last court order. From the way I understand things, that nullified the first three court orders in which they were adding up. So this was, and if I'm incorrect, I apologize, uh but this was up on August of twenty twenty-four, so about thirteen months ago. So the stipulations would be on cleaning up the property, that type of thing, that it could come back before the court and the lien be reduced or and or dropped, so anyway, long story short, I did take the paperwork to the Marshall County uh registered deeds and that the lien has been placed, but that is the stipulation.
Why would it be dropped, why would the lien be dropped?
Well, if they agree, if the owner or anyone who possibly would want to, would uh go in and clean the property, that's what it was said, put up for. Uh the the charges of fifty dollars a day were because of all the stuff that was wrong with the property, okay? There was no running water, there, it was all the health sanitation hazards, whatever you wanna say.
Right.
Uh and if that was cleaned up, it could be taken back before the court. And it would be up to the judge to see how that would be resolved, all the issues and such. And that's my understanding, I am no blogger or judge, but I think I said that right.
Yeah, I mean, I just refer back to what her order says and again, the the idea is correct is that it was, that's what she determined that the ordinance violation fees were as of that date, August of last year, that, you know, people thirty-five hundred dollars. And she held open if it wasn't cleaned up, that it could be greater than that. And if the town had to go in and clean it up, of course, it would seem to cover additional funds, but that's where she lasted the last time it appeared in town court.
But I was contacted by Mr. Daggett's. I sent a step up, can you correct her, in Michigan, and she said that her father wanted to get it cleaned up and that's all that was left, I was left, I didn't, I said I would give a clean situation and I have not been able to speak directly since then.
Well, if that property, if that property sells and closes, could we put a expiration date? You have thirty days to clean the property or sixty days, I don't know the condition of the property, other than all the spools this line.
I think that's what he's asking us to go look at.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh possible paving projects, Donnie Groves and I went around town the other day, drove down here for roads and some of them were just better, lack of a term, they're just pure crap. Uh Robinson Road and some of those places down by the tracks, they really need to be fixed and whatnot, so I have called Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund and looking into if we can get uh a loan for the paving, uh they had told me that there's a possibility we can go in with another town and the more money that is issued, usually the longer the the term is and also possibly better rates on the on the uh loan itself, so they did call me and said Hohenwald is wanting to go in and uh get a loan and wanted to know if we were interested. I said, yes, uh we not, obviously not sign anything, but I asked them to send us some terms and what possibly we could get for it and what the terms would be and that I would bring it to you when I got that, I have not received anything from them yet. Uh Donnie and I looked at about two point two miles total of paving. Uh and that's a whole lot of the area over there on the west side of Lawrence. I guess it would be Broadview, Biggers, Low, Robinson. Low. Yeah, Low, even down to Low and Windscrest. Central. And Feed Mill. Polaris, Venus.
Basically that whole neighborhood?
A lot of. A lot of it. Probably about seventy-five percent of it.
Really?
So, uh and we could, we do, it'd have to do it all, but you know, if we could get the money to do it, I think it would be beneficial to the town and 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 the people who live here. And also, uh.
It's on there.
Yes, Polaris is on there.
I don't know if they just thought it was too much as this or.
Polaris and Venus, as he says, one of them, and uh Patterson Cemetery is the other. Just for the. Stevens Road is counted with that area.
Really?
Yeah, and it's been tarred and chipped for several times, but uh that's counting.
Now, do you say it was?
Now, do you say it was a bit?
No, we're not gonna say either why I'm hard with anything, but that's the way the utilities are. We might have put a foot somewhere here or there, but as far as actually widening it. It's just the way the town.
There, there is some possible, we'll have to quote, but possibly milling some.
Yeah.
Because we have five, six roads. That's where the shelter gets so high.
For what it's worth, I read years ago that, and I was telling Donnie the other day, we went down and, uh. What road do you live on, Joe? Edmondson, Edmondson. Edmondson and Robinson were meant to be one-way streets going toward Broadview.
Right.
And then Broadview back up is a one-way street to Lawrence. However, nobody over the years did that. Of course, I don't know, but it was never like put into effect, so to speak. But that's why those roads are so narrow because they were meant to be one-way streets.
Is that, is that something we can go back and look at, change the traffic jam?
Yeah.
Sure was. Probably did that, but, uh.
I'm editing.
It has, I think. I think it was coming down Biggers from Lawrence was one-way toward the tracks. And then the right turn to Robinson and Edmondson were one-way. And then back up Broadview would be one-way.
It'd be nice for the buses. It's dangerous if you pass in a bus.
Well, safety being the key aspect of all citizens, I think that might be some willingness to.
I think it would be.
Look at.
The ditch drop off.
Oh, yeah. And just, and putting it mildly, if we put any more pavement on there, it's just.
It's gonna be hotter.
So, uh, I do think it would be wise to wait till we pave it to do anything like that. But, uh, it's obviously something that we can look into and, uh, for safety, you're right.
Perfect, thank you.
Be one-way and then back out.
Right, now that would just be on that area right there.
You never knew that.
You're still gonna have some narrow roads, Broadview's narrow, obviously, all the way down to the highway. And getting in and out there right on the highway.
Yeah, that would probably have some.
I don't know, I don't know if your truck could get out of that, so. Okay, anyway, moving on, anything that would be done would obviously be brought before the court. Uh, before we spend any money or decide to do it, it would have to be bid out. It's a, it's a large project. So, uh, it would have to be bid out. We would have to get the engineer to do all that. So, it's, it's a ways away, but we could possibly consider looking at it in the spring. Uh, and it would take a, a budget minimum to do that because we didn't budget for it, obviously. We didn't build it stone. Uh, maintenance bonds for Ellington and Ezele, we have talked with Joseph Doherty. And, uh, he has said that he is, knows that he owes his bond and he is getting it together. He was gonna talk with Steve Foster and then get back with me. Uh, Todd, you sent for Ellington, you sent them a.
Form.
Form for what the bond should look like, basically. And they said that they would get back with us because they just wanted the terminology correct. Moving on, Marshall County Library update. Uh, I met with Shafira from the library and talked to her. Uh, it was a very good meeting. Told her what the board had asked about, uh. And that we'd like to start charging a fifteen hundred dollar a month. Uh, and I offered, uh, to start this. We thought that the contract was up in February, but Marshall County never signed the contract. Mayor didn't, didn't until that May two years ago. So, the contract actually isn't up until May and then the library board didn't sign it until July. So, we have time still. We had, we thought we had to be six months ahead of, so we're well within that. But I offered to start the new contract on July first, being a new fiscal year. So, if we, and told them, I said, I'm sure our board would agree to not charge any rent up until July. And let the county be able to budget it into their budget for the next fiscal year, starting in July. She seemed okay with that. She took it from county. And, uh, I passed that out to you guys just a minute ago. I just received this. Probably at four forty-five, right before the meeting, uh, an email. And says, basically, the library was established as a mutual benefit. And county mayor basically says they're not gonna pay any of it. So, I guess at some point in the next few months, this board will have a decision to make on what to do with the library. You either will have to say, okay, we'll just let's keep it there or, you know.
In eviction.
I, yeah, I do think that the decision needs to be made and notice given to the county six months prior. If, if this board decides to terminate, go ahead and give them six months notice before July. And, you know, you can still negotiate if it, if you, if they want to and you want to. Just to be absolutely clear on the lease.
Under this, it says under here, under current agreement, Marshall County is responsible for providing staff salaries, benefits, office supplies, furniture books, and other materials necessary. Well, true, it's their library.
If material is necessary and operations including internal maintenance, I mean, what about?
Okay, but they have.
And the utilities cost.
We have been paying all utilities.
Yeah, so would they, would they pay the utilities?
And I, I explained to her that we weren't asking them to pay the utilities. We wanted the rent to cover the cost of the utilities. Which is what we talked about, uh, and the cost of perhaps new air conditioner or whatnot, you know? Uh, she seemed fine with it, uh, but obviously the county budget committee is not. So, it says the county's financial obligation is never included the rent. And the mayor, after some conversations, does not believe the county has any interest in renegotiation of this agreement. So.
They will call us occasionally to come change light bulbs.
But he did say, yeah. Well, I asked her about the light bulb changing and the stopped up toilets and things like that. And she said, because I had called down there and I said, y'all need to get, county to do this, this is not our job. And she said they had started calling the county the last few months, but we did do that several times.
They just probably didn't know that.
She said the staff did not know and they weren't told that. They thought they should call us.
That's right.
Uh, it does say he will bring this to the budget committee's attention for a formal vote. But I kind of doubt they're gonna go against what he tells us.
How much did we have to use that library? Did we ever find that out? Did full consistently the schools?
You got to use a lot once a month.
That's what I was wondering. We should go look into that.
No, we gotta report on it.
She told me the other day though, she said it's kinda busy when they have events. And other than that, it's not, was her quote to me. I said, well, how, do you have an event? She's meeting once every couple of weeks.
What would this board do with the building if it wasn't a library?
So.
Sell it or what?
Hmm, I have an idea.
What is it?
Move police department, get that fire department, clean it to the fire department.
That's been talked about.
Great job.
That's been talked about.
Been talked about.
Y'all need living quarters.
Guarantee.
It's big enough, ain't it, Ben?
I think, I think it's large enough for, um.
Bigger than what they got now?
Yes.
Police, what?
I, personnel staff, I think so. It has areas for interview interrogation.
Remember, this is just discussion.
Yeah, given the timing, I would suggest putting this for discussion on the next Boma meeting.
We run Boma meeting and discuss it then. And, uh, then you can come to a possible agreement and, and either make motion, vote on it, Ben, or wait another month or six. So, there's more fire catch.
Can we make sure the chief is available for that meeting so we don't come up with a plan and?
And not know about it.
Both of them.
Both of them.
Both.
Both of them.
Yeah, because if he.
Well, if they both can't be here, you can just table the discussion.
If you know the fire chief's gonna be fine with it, because he's getting the whole building, they're not moving, he's gonna be like, this is great. But the, I, I would be curious to see what the police chief had to say. Is it enough room for him to make it work?
Yeah, sure.
Does he not like it? You know what I'm saying?
I agree with you.
And they can still use the courtroom. We did that for years.
I'm sure staff would be thrilled with the plan and see it's all bigger, so.
Chief cons, you know. But we also got, will have to decide and we will have to get out of the contract with the library if that is what you choose.
Okay.
All right, uh, almost done, guys, sorry. Uh, sales tax update. I went and met with the school board superintendent, Justin Perry. Uh, had a great meeting with him. We sat and talked for about an hour and fifteen minutes. And obviously the, huh, conversation started in on the sales tax. And he was like, when are y'all gonna rescind that resolution? And I said, well, we're not. And so things started to go south from there. And, uh, he says that basically the county is not gonna back off. They, and that Barbara Medley says that she can't give an answer. And I said, well, Todd says he can't give an answer from Barbara Medley, so, uh, they're kind of at a standstill and.
Well, I just, I mean, if y'all know, I, I certainly haven't communicated anything that the town is gonna rescind the resolution. And we, the last communication I had, we were waiting to see what the lawsuit result was. And of course, that was favorable to the town. So, that, I hadn't communicated, but she hasn't communicated with me since then either, so.
His quote to me was, the county commission is scared to death that y'all are going to pull out. And it's not because Chapel Hill's going to pull out, it's because if Chapel Hill does, they think Lewisburg will.
Well, why won't the county commission come and talk to us about it?
I asked him that and he said that he has asked the county commission to sit down and have a meeting.
We've been asked for that meeting for months.
And I said, it's not our fault. We've been asking for it. We'd love to sit down and talk with them. And I said, we keep getting conversations at the football game or whatever from one of them that, you know, that's just the way it is.
Is that something the county mayor can set up if we ask him to?
County mayor's the one.
County mayor's the one that's not answering.
We had a meeting and the county mayor shut it down.
Yeah.
He's, he's the one that don't wanna, don't wanna talk.
I think at one time they maybe suggested that they might meet if the town rescinded the resolution.
That's what they said. We would have rescind the resolution first.
Yeah, then it was not.
He says, because we have this resolution hanging over that we want to terminate the contract of the sales tax. Which ends up being about approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year from us to the county. That would be coming into our town, goes to the county. Now, it does all go for the schools. He shows me the money. They do have a reserve fund. Uh, the next building project is supposed to be on Delkens and, and the elementary school. The budget committee, uh, they, county school board turned that in and the budget committee turned it down. Said, if Chapel Hill rescinds their resolution, we're not going through anything for building for any school. So.
So, not just Chapel Hill, but for any school?
They said they've got one in Lewisburg that needs a full renovation as well and it's, it's off the books, so.
They do understand that we're not trying to completely get rid of the contract or even change it about.
I told him exactly that.
All we wanna do is update it.
And he says that he just feels, or, and whoever feels that there will all be, always be school debt. And that, uh, the contract should just go on forever.
Yeah, I, I don't think they want to show where the funds have been being applied either, for the money. Cause then you say that there was no record of like how long, like where all the money's been going and.
Well, he said it's gonna be going to pay off bonds. And once those original bonds were paid off, there were other bonds and this just started going to pay those off. And now there are current bonds that go up through two thousand forty-five.
But didn't we request the paper trail to have, go and provide that?
Just he's starting up your sales tax.
Yeah, I mean, that was just not necessarily where it was going to. But when I first came across this two and a half years ago, I came and said, I told Tanny, I said, we're not getting enough money in sales tax. And I don't know why. And we called the county and they said, well, that's what you're supposed to get. And I said, well, give me the breakdown. Why can't I get a breakdown? How you're coming to this number? Because it's not right. Well, sure it's right. We've been doing it that way for years and we've got an Excel spreadsheet right here that tells you how it's going. So, he sends me an Excel spreadsheet and it shows that instead of getting fifty percent, we're getting two-thirds of fifty percent. So, we're getting the fifty going back to the county from the state, but they're only giving us two-thirds of that fifty. And I said, why? And, uh, Scotty Portes spoke to me was, that's the way we've always done it. Why? Why? I kept asking why. Well, nobody wanted me to ask why. So, that's when we started digging, found the resolution from nineteen ninety-three where this was put into effect. It was supposed to be a twenty-year contract. Uh, but the way it was worded with the handshakes and all that back then, uh, it just kinda got forgotten about, so to speak. I guess. Once twenty years went by, you had different people on boards, you had different people in the school board. Nobody remembered that resolution being done, when it was done or anything. It had just become a fact that the cities gave the county a little extra money for, for schools. So, once that passed, it's been thirteen more years now and nothing's ever been done. And I brought it up and it opened a counter in Lawrence.
When did you say that originally started?
Nineteen eighty-eight started and then it was a formal resolution in nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah, from what I was saying, nobody wants to stop paying that to the county for the schools. We just wanna get.
And I made the, I looked him straight in the eye. I said, we don't wanna take your money.
No.
We want a new contract. That's it.
That's, it could be the same thing.
I said, it could say the same thing. We just wanna have a new contract for twenty years. And then twenty years from now, we want another contract.
Yeah.
I said, what's the, what's the stop at some point? If everything builds and builds, builds like it looks like it may.
If they said.
What happens if Marshall County is self-sustaining at some point in the future? And doesn't need that money from us or Lewisburg or whoever? Why is it not our right to keep that money at that point? And he couldn't answer that. He goes, well, you probably, you know, that's, there's always gonna be debt and, but, yeah, we got it too.
If.
That's what I told him. I said, we could use the money a lot more than y'all right now.
If they could set up a meeting, would y'all go there if we could get them?
We've told them that.
I know you have.
Been trying, yeah.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
I think if we could just sit down and talk, I feel like we'd actually get somewhere.
Or y'all don't, if I don't know I has a power, so I gotta make sure I ask the board. Uh, cause I don't have a lot of power, get a lot of things, but I can talk to the mayor's personally, set up a meeting one-on-one with him and get him to set us up a meeting where y'all go.
Absolutely.
This is very important.
I'm gonna do it tomorrow.
Or I think, or, or just go to.
I will go to his office tomorrow and set up a meeting.
Go to the, uh, commissioner's meeting, the county commission meeting.
What, was it any school or county commission?
Anyone can stand up and speak at county commission meetings.
I'm, I'm gonna go to the mayor's office and set up a meeting with the mayor.
Well, I think that if, if we could request Commissioner Jones to be there as well. Cause I know he's probably, he's contacted Jeeves. He should be up at every ballgame.
Well, and I, I spoke in depth with Craig Blackwell.
He called me.
About two weeks ago and gave him all kind of form, I gave him all the resolutions, all the newspaper clippings, everything about it. And told him, I said, this is what's wrong. I said, the county commission is holding this thing up. And he was not even aware of a bunch of that. So, I don't know what they've been told down there or what, but, uh, he knows that now.
Well, if you, if you go back and read the articles, of course, from Shelbyville and Bedford County, you know, the same timeframe. You're gonna read exactly like what the county's saying now, what, what Bedford County said about Shelbyville. So, the, the facts are really similar, um, but the game plan is also pretty similar too, so.
We wanna do what's right by the schools, but we also wanna do what's right by the town. And, uh, just, I mean, nobody ever told them that we wanted their money. We just want a new contract that has a new date on it.
I'll see if I can get a meeting set up. I'll start with Mike. Mayor, I'm mayor. I'll go to his office. I'll set a meeting with him.
Thank you, sir.
One-on-one and then we'll see if we can get a meeting set up where everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Last thing, the events committee update. The events committee met, uh, I believe the last two weeks, two weeks and a half ago, whatever it was. Last thing, the events committee update, the events committee met, uh, I believe the last two weeks, three and a half, whatever it was, uh. The parade, as everybody knows, will be on thirteenth. We are having a tree light, not a tree lighting. It's more like a park lighting. We're gonna do it at Veterans Park on December the seventh, which is Feral Harbor Day. Uh, and we are getting a company to come in, Middle Tennessee Christmas lights. I went and got bids from people. They came in less than half of anybody else and it was because of the gentleman, his partner had recent, his partner was a veteran and had recently passed away and said, I've been trying to figure out a way to honor him. And he goes, this being a veterans park, there's nothing better. And he said, I'll do it for half price if you got, let me put one tree up for you. I said, have your tree. So.
Have two.
I said, take, take whatever you need right there and and do a little monument for your, for your partner and uh.
And that's November the, the seventh.
December the seventh. You missed the date, Dave.
And what was the thirteenth? The thirteenth is December the parade.
Yeah.
Thirteen's fourteen.
Thirteen, December seventh on Sunday, I believe. Or maybe it is fourteen.
Thank you.
I don't have, I don't have my calendar right here.
I will, I will check and communicate about it.
I don't wanna be wrong on my dates here. They'll call me out.
They'll, they'll get on.
You make me change it only if anyone does do. Uh, is that right, seventh and thirteenth?
That's what that's on with you. I hate to be being honest with you here.
December thirteenth, which I have, uh, five o'clock.
Okay.
It's a Saturday.
Then that's it. Anybody got anything else, I guess?
The ordinance amendments will be on the next ordinance meeting. There'll be a public hearing, um, and the second reading.
So we'll probably have all.
Um, did you use some pens any? Yes.
Maybe that's all I've got.
Well, we got Halloween, October. I think Halloween's there gonna be at the police fire department. That'd be coming up soon.
Yeah, Trumper Tree, I think, I guess, will be going on. I have not heard.
We'll have a meeting before that.
I have a couple of questions for everybody that's here for a little bit. So the dump trucks coming in and out of where the old post office is.
Mm-hmm.
And they're like, who's responsible for the things that are happening?
Ultimately, I think PCS trucking is, uh, I've spoken with Todd Warner, who's where out at East Stock and truck drivers. Uh, truck drivers, as you know, get paid by the lot and they're worried about how fast they can get in and out of there and not a lot of other things.
What was the agreement? Was it after a certain time and before a certain time?
There was a recommendation. It was a recommendation. There was never a ver- uh, there was a verbal agreement by the previous owner, but there was never anything written down that said they would not go in and out of their hands for a while.
Wasn't there supposed to be an alternate?
I thought it was.
Yep.
That was also part of that horrible agreement that it was never part of the motion.
We need to fix that.
Two weeks from now, they're gonna be done.
Well, they might be, but we're not a lumber truck.
True, 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 true.
I mean, shingles, uh, drywall, it's, it's gonna be a mess.
It's gonna get worse, but.
And there were semis too.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, get wor- I mean, it's gonna get worse.
Well, I was coming, I was coming out of Spring Creek Street from being down at that subdivision a couple of weeks ago and I was sitting right there to turn left onto the highway and a dump truck was gonna turn right. Well, he obviously fit and turned right with me sitting there. There was a car in front of me too. So instead, he decided he would go around and go through the parking lot, that little narrow area of the coffee shop where the slots are this way and he went across them this way. And I backed up and wouldn't let him go through and I had to work with him, so.
So the, yeah, the most of.
They had been notified.
With, with respect to construction on the development, if the planning commission, I can't remember if they did, if they hadn't, they need to implement a construction traffic plan. And then it becomes an issue of, okay, if you see somebody violating it, then you need to issue a stop work order immediately. I thought we did that. I thought, I thought for the construction. I thought we had a time set in a certain way they had to go in and out. For the dirt removal, that was done for, before, I think, the final approval for the development was that, if I'm remembering correctly.
They brought the ends of the dirt. From a different.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that was the one.
They wanted to bring in dirt ahead of time. They brought five hundred loads or something.
Oh, yeah, what has, I mean, you gotta have some.
And that's when that was writ- that was written to pass.
See it and then.
Whenever on the actual, the weekend.
I, I listened to that meeting and it was, um, agreed to by, I think it's Sam Cowan with K two. But it never, when the motion was made, it wasn't part of that motion.
What, you made for the, for what's.
Is K two the.
K two's the current, yeah. That was the le- latest one. I think it was back in May.
Well, if you can issue a stop work order for, you know, five days or ten days, that will get the developer to make sure the trucks are going the right route because that costs them a lot more than any charge. And it's not, technically, it's not an ordinance violation anyway.
Who, uh, who, who the issues the stop?
Well, that's, town has to have somebody to issue it, yeah. Has to have an enforcement officer that, you know, issues it. And they can do it upon.
I guess the point is what happens if they don't abide by it?
Well, then they can end up, if they don't, end up, then end up having to take it to court, yeah. And that shuts them down for longer.
Right. So John, one of my biggest concerns is, we're gonna be replacing a lot more asphalt in two months if we don't get these trucks.
Well, that's, that's under road maintenance too, but as long, but they need to stay off the southeast forest and.
But the, the developer had agreed to repair any damages.
Is that the Spring Creek Street is gonna be taken care of?
Cause they couldn't take out the bridge.
And what, what we had discovered was, well, I discovered was people were, the dump trucks were turning on the southeast forest and going all the way down and shortcutting through the traffic.
Right.
And then I almost got the side of my truck taken out by about seven of them the other day.
The alternator was hasting. Yeah, well, Shane truck and the green one, that's the same guy that did.
About took out the side of my new truck and I thought I was gonna lose my religion on it.
So there's several different trucking companies going in and out of there, but I assume that PCS is so contracted.
Those are five or six of them in a row. They must have called it a yellow light at the perfect time because they were hammered down. Okay.
Got one for you with closing. There's a lot of vendors going around the streets and I've asked the last two of them if they have a permit, because I guess we're supposed to have permits as well. Last one said they did when they, when I called down here and they didn't even know who it was or what it was. So when they get a permit, can they be issued a badge or something?
They are.
They are?
They have their permit that they're supposed to carry.
Well, none of them come up with it.
So?
Is there some other highlighted bar or?
Count police.
Uh, well, we end up doing that after finding out it wasn't, but like there's another one, it's like the third time we finally told them, you know, you've been by three times. It knows, still knows of. Have a look.
So what was the result that?
We ended up chasing them down and started raining and jumped out in their car, but Todd didn't take care of the, of the truck. Cause they didn't have a permit. So if they don't have a permit, the same thing, is they applying to it or are they, they're not allowed to have another permit for six months because they violated the first?
It's an ordinance violation.
He can issue, he can issue, he can issue a city's attached to broach fifty dollars.
So it might be something that, we mentioned to Todd that, hey, this stubbornness is happening more often. Yeah, you, you're fine. Is that per person or is that just for the?
Per person, per occurrence.
Okay. I got a few closing remarks. If y'all, if anybody else got anything else? The only thing I do wanna talk about is the events committee and they didn't take care of that one. We talked a little bit about it, but they've really worked hard and done a lot in the past week on that events committee. I'm glad we put that together. Thank God I've had no complaints over nobody on that board, uh, because they've worked really, really hard. So we appreciate part of this. Thing we've done a long time for is the events for concern. Uh, getting ahead of it. And the other closing remark is, I know y'all have heard that I'm gonna step down. The only reason I have not stepped down is for outside noise. Cause I don't want them to think I'm stepping down because they ran me out or because I've done any little things, cause now I'm stepping down. Uh, as y'all know, I've been trying to step down for a while. I know some people might know it, might not. Uh, and within two weeks, for less than two weeks, my wife's gonna have two more surgeries. Uh, when I leave this meeting tonight, I'm gonna have to go back to my job and work another three quarters because I left them and I shouldn't have. And we're growing. I'm gonna be more involved in my work and my wife's gonna have surgeries and it's just a lot going on in my home right now. My house will be up for sale in two more weeks. Probably the middle of March, I cleared up the setup the second time. So let everybody know this is not the first time I've tried to sell my house. I took my house off the market because my wife got really sick and started having cancer. It's hard to move and do surgeries and try to sell a house when you have cancer. So that being said, I am gonna step down. I don't know the date yet. It depends on the outside noise. Uh, I'm stubborn and I don't want them to be pushing me out and going everywhere saying, well, got the mayor, we got rid of him, we made him step down. This has been worked on for about a year now. That's why Ben's in the position he's in. He's stepping up, ready to take over. He's biting at the chops to take my job over. And, and just to be honest with you, my priorities are not straight right now. And they're gonna tell you that because that time I leave a meeting, they all both said, you got your priorities straight. Well, I've been living here sixty years. Chapel Hill is my life. It's in my heart. It is part of my priority to me. My priorities may be different to other people's. My family right now should be my priority and, and I am gonna step down. Just letting you know now, but I'm scared now is not the time because of, people keep making me matter and I'll stay and rerun. And, uh, but if I sell my house, of course, I'm probably gonna be outside the city limits. I'm planning on staying in Chapel Hill. We got several places we're looking at. So this might be my last meeting, the next, the next meeting, and I may step down before that. So I'm just letting everybody be aware. I don't know what then, when I'm gonna do it. Uh, I am gonna talk to his showman, get him involved and set up his appointments. I'm gonna go to the county mayor and talk to him and set up a sub board meeting. So just be prepared that I will be stepping down at some point within the next few weeks probably. So let everybody know that. It ain't the first time. And if somebody outside this town and them young men right here get out there and say they ran me off, I'm gonna stay another year. And my wife, I just have to put up with it. So.
I don't think anyone's gonna fault you for resigning to take care of your wife and your family.
Well.
No one's gonna say you were.
Oh, this occurred at a wrong time for me, I guess. And, uh.
And for as far as the board's concerned, uh, Commissioner Rager sits down, Ben moves into the role, um, temporary. What we need to do for.
At that point, I should have.
Same thing that happened to me whenever.
Or you can wait till the election, because the election's less than a year. We've done that in the past.
Less than a year, you can wait and just go with what you got. Or you can appoint a new alderman to finish the term, which would have been his through his office.
I think last time that happened.
That's it with Dottie.
And you would have to appoint a new vice mayor or like.
Or you can stay like you are, unless if you got them. Last time, I think, we just stayed like we were, because it was like less than a year for the election. Is that right, Todd? I, I think that's right. Yeah, I may have to look back at the charter after the last meeting I had.
Craig, Craig did take over for Dottie though, didn't he?
I did.
Yeah.
That's right though.
Ready to go through the election process?
And then I want to through the election process with our attorney.
I would, I would like to, to bring something to the board is his interest. Uh, education is important. I think we are in a very learning experience, learning curve now. Once we get all this stuff behind us, I would like if we could do some training, actual ethics, more code, charter, all that kinda training. And I will say this, I just recently started the Leadership Marshall,
How much about?
Which is really, really cool, uh, with Ms. Linda Potts. If you have an opportunity on the next session, uh, reach out to her. It's really cool. It's a great, great leadership course. I've only been through day one of orientation, but I've learned a lot of leadership skills and stuff there that applies to the civilian aspect of it as opposed to government. It's really cool and I just, I'm excited about that and would like for y'all to consider some of that.
I know that Alderman said like he asked me to look into giving someone for maybe him to ask to come up here, train on Robert Schur's order, that type of thing.
Bingo.
Running meetings, what can and can't be done and said, so.
Well, I think that obviously now we're trying to play catch up, but I think if, if we, if we can educate ourselves, it will better serve us more than.
So September thirtieth, I'm going to utilities training at Port Park from eight to three?
He is two and so is Hocken.
I am, September thirty.
You told me you were looking.
Sure, yes.
Can they put on the agenda? Do they have to accept it? They'll actually will accept my resignation.
That's the one Duck River Agency's putting.
How would that work, Tom? Yeah, if you wanna add that to the agenda, you know, they could certainly be on there. And of course, if at such time you do tender your resignation. But if you know the event, you can get it on the. I've got an amendment. Y'all want a adjournment meeting? I need some adjournments. Make a motion, adjourn, have a second.
Second.
The same thing you and I did online before.
So was this an invite to just. I'd like to do that.
I have a right to bring your.
But they can bring your wife or whatever with them. I think that's what you said.